Okay, we're now recording, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And John, would you like to take minutes? Of course, you can always do it from the recording. Thank you. And also, if you would, just make a note of any tasks that need to be done, so we can review that at the end. All right. There is one person who's logged in with just a phone number. Does anybody know who that is?
That's Debbie Lind.
Debbie Lind, okay. Okay, the agenda was sent out by Beth, and as well as the minutes. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the agenda? I'll see if I can get that screen shared for everyone. Okay. Can you see the agenda on your screen? You should be sharing it from mine.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. So, hearing no changes, we'll move on to the minutes. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the minutes? I did have one question on the discussion about the new permission change. I didn't know if permission was granted to be able to mark an item lost, or just to be able to change the status of an item. Or both.
My understanding, Mrs. Beth, was that we were changing the Mark permissions, like Mark Item Missing, Mark Item Lost. Actually, I want to qualify that. Maybe Missing should still be System and Branch, but certainly Mark Damage, Mark Lost, we were going to change to a consorcial level permission. My assumption was that Missing is more of a local thing, because it's usually when you're going to find it on the shelf, you discover it missing, rather than off-site.
Okay. Hearing no other edits to the agenda or minutes, those will stand as written. We'll move on to the open forum. Would anyone like to comment on a topic already on the agenda?
This is Buzzy from Hutter. I was wondering if the council would consider maybe do some research into increasing the number of renewals.
Increasing number of renewals, okay.
And Perry, this is Brent. I had kind of a question to ask about OPAC visibility of the lost and missing status, so for patrons, what they see on catalog searches.
Do we want to add both of these to the agenda, rather than the open forum?
Yeah, I think those could be on the agenda.
Okay. We can certainly add those under New Business. Okay. Any other comments or suggestions for the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to Reports, and start with Brent.
All right. So, and I'll just put this in chat, too, but this is kind of an overview of the update I gave for the UCSLD, UCSLD in-service day. And yeah, we basically upgraded the operating systems of all the application and utility servers that run Evergreen, so that we can be positioned to have, it will be actually in the loop, and we have access to more of the security features and performance advantages of those versions. That included a reinstall of our existing Evergreen installation, which I think went pretty well. There were a few hiccups, as Ryan mentioned, and a few others, probably the Mark templates, when you hit Control S, or missing the trademark signs and copyright symbols, but those should be back in right now. I removed some of the older, very out-of-date security protocols, not as like SSLV3. Basically, just secured and updated our installation to try to future-proof it and make sure that we have backups in the case of something catastrophic happening, which hopefully won't ever. And also, just removal and cleanup of our database, which resulted in a reduction of a good portion of the size, which is good not only for performance, but for wear and tear on the hard drives we use. And also, in there, I had some kind of training goals for Reports and Local Administration training as well. The Reports training, I'd like to do as a two-part affair. It would be better done in person, I think, as kind of in a group setting, when we're all together, but it could be done remotely as well. It's just a little easier to do face-to-face. The first part of the Report training would kind of go over setting up your login, setting up folders, to running basic templates, and getting them set to recur and sent to your email, finding the type of report you need, things like that. And the second part of the Report training would be more advanced, and it would cover using existing templates as a template to create your own version of a report, and how you'd have to create those. Now, it'd have to include a little bit of kind of relational database training as well on there, just to kind of let you know what you're seeing when you're doing the custom building, because it might not be included right away. And then, secondary to that, would just be the Local Administration training, and that's for either PICs or library directors to kind of go over things that you would do as an administrator through Evergreen, like setting up close dates, setting up the self-check station, or doing the receipts, and also things like the offline procedures when we do an upgrade, or if there is a connectivity problem. And I just wanted to ask the council today if they had thoughts or ideas about a good timeframe for that, that we could possibly schedule in the next few months, or whenever works best. I know it is kind of a holiday time, and we are hoping to upgrade Evergreen to 2.9.1, hopefully whenever that gets released. And then, moving on from that, just, there are a couple proposed setting changes that I had, which were to the hold expire interval, which is how long a hold stays on a hold shelf before the hold gets canceled, and it gets brought back into circulation, which is currently unset at the Sage level, but is set by some libraries. I think, is it Hood River? I think it's, sorry, I'd have to check, but I think it's around 180 days at Hood River. But yeah, what would be a good timeframe?
See, and I know.
Sorry, Ryan, did you say something?
Yeah, I was going to say, I know in LeGrand, we'd like to have that automatic hold expiration, and we actually pull ours after just a week. If you don't pick it up in seven days, you don't get it. And right now, we have to do that.
No, it'd be great, because ours, there was-
Ryan, this is a different setting, though. What you're talking about is the shelf expiration time, which is another setting. It might be good to have a Sage-wide setting for, which I thought we did.
Oh, you're talking about, like, unfulfilled holds?
Yes.
Ah, okay. Well, that would still be nice, too, actually, so.
Yeah, so they don't just sit on the shelf, or a patron has a hold that maybe doesn't get filled forever. So this would at least kill that hold if it wasn't filled after a set amount of time. And then, the last part of that would be to disable the patron credit, which a few libraries have implemented now. It's kind of, when you're paying a patron's bills, you have the option to forgive, cash, check, I think, and then patron credit's also on there. And this has kind of caused, at least in my experience, a little more trouble than it's worth. It seems that, I mean, I'd like to hear also from the council and the libraries as well, but if they are extensively using the patron credit feature, and if so, what that use case is, and yeah, why they use it, I suppose, over just the forgive option.
And I wanted to mention that these two proposed Sage-wide settings are down further in the agenda, under New Business.
Yeah.
So, going back to that, and more going to the shelf expire time, we have run into a few instances where libraries are keeping our items on their old shelves for much, much longer than seven days. Like, in one case, a library was keeping one of our items on the shelf for three months. Is there a way that we can stop that from happening? I mean, we totally get, like, sometimes a patron needs a few more days to pick something up, but it seems like there's a limit.
Yeah, you're right, Buzzy.
Yeah, we could have a shelf expire interval at a Sage level as well.
Well, it's not, I mean, the issue is, it might just be me talking to individual libraries, because I think you can always extend the shelf expire time.
You can. And so, maybe it's an education, training issue.
Is that what was happening in that case, Buzzy, or were they just not returning the expired hold?
I believe that they, they basically extended the shelf expire time to, like, several months out.
Yeah, I think that's just going to take contacting those particular libraries and explaining what the proper practice should be.
And then, sorry, I guess just to finish up the update, I'm sorry I've taken so long here. Also, there was an update, update to the SIP server that runs a couple things, from self-checks, to Library2Go, to, I think, the PC reservation software in some libraries. And so, that was upgraded, and there were a few sites that needed to make a few changes in regards to the, something called Keep Alive setting, but if you are running into any issues with SIP applications, please contact either Beth and I, and we can try to get those fixed right away. We've had success with the issues we have encountered.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Beth?
I summarized most of what I've been working on in the agenda. Basically, site visits, taking advantage of weather while it lasted, and doing database cleanup, reports, committee work. Automation projects are going well. I've got a lot out of the Idaho Library Association Conference, first time I've attended that one, and look forward to trying out some of the ideas they had there, particularly a weeding report that I found pretty interesting. And just recently, attended the Irrigan Grand Opening, which was also great. Any questions of Brent or I, before we move on?
No questions. I do want to just throw in here, it's an aside, but I'll include it as the chair. If anybody's unaware, there was recently an automated materials handling battle between King County Library System and the New York Public Library System, and the King County Library System edged out New York, which is a great testament to their use of Evergreen. I know they did a lot of work to make Evergreen so robust as to be able to handle that quantity of items in rapid fashion, so that just goes to show what's possible with the system. So, congratulations to them. I think I'll send them a card or something, on behalf of Sage.
Well, that's great.
Okay, let's move on to the Cataloging Committee.
This is, this is Beth. And here again, I kind of summarized what's been going on with the Cataloging Committee and cataloging work in the system within the agenda. So, I am interim chair. David has been hard at work, working on training materials, working with individuals who still needed Mark training class, and we're moving on to work with what we're now calling the Reference Guide, which is the former Cataloging Standards Manual. And we reviewed matching standards, and came up with some good ideas of how to change those, and we're going to be looking at a draft at the next committee meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other items anybody'd like to add about cataloging issues? Okay. Circulation Committee is inactive. We'll move on to the Courier Committee report.
The Courier Committee did meet earlier this month, and we talked about the reports of damage to DVD cases, and I had, before that, kind of pulled some statistics on how many DVDs were circulating within a month, and looking at purchasing DVD boxes, and did discover that there is enough money in our budget to purchase some, and so the Courier Committee decided that that was a good way to go, to protect our resources, and so I'll be ordering those DVD boxes and distributing them out to the libraries. We did discuss briefly audiobook boxes, as well as CD boxes, but we're going to bring that up at the next meeting. One of the difficulties with audiobooks is they're all different sizes in cases, and trying to find a box that will work for most of those is going to take a little bit of research on my end. So, and we're also working on revising the Courier procedures. It's out of date, and Jeff has thankfully volunteered to take that on, so we'll be looking at that draft at the next meeting.
Okay. Anybody have anything to add about Courier issues? I should mention that Carmen, our ILL person, has been working on a redesign of our labels, our Courier labels, and since the discussion from the last Sage meeting seemed to show that those were just for identification purposes, primarily, we're going to be putting the Sage logo, which is an image of our library card currently, and the Sage logo on those prominently, and pretty much have that be the sticker. I think, I was wondering if I should send that around for Sage to see if that would be problematic for anybody? I don't know if some are still writing the due dates on there, if we need to leave a space for that.
This is Buzzy. I was kind of wondering the same thing, because we're redesigning ours, too, and it's a great idea to add the Sage logo, but I wasn't really sure whether to leave the due date field either.
Okay.
And we can use it, because it's, but there's no reason that we need to use it, because we can print receipts for people who really want them.
So, several people are writing that they do use that due date space.
Yeah. Not everybody has receipt printers, so I think the due date for some libraries is still Are you leaving a space for destination library, Perry?
No, we weren't.
I think that's also useful when you're doing a lot of ILL processing, and maybe haven't put things in the bags yet.
Well, many people do not print their transit slips. So, we put the destination on the label, running the line on our transit slip.
Yeah. That does save paperwork. So, I mean, I guess, I feel like the destination and due date are still, I mean, we could reduce the area that they take up on the label, but I think they still serve some usefulness.
We'll work that in. Thank you. All right. Nothing from the Development Committee, and I don't believe the Governance Committee got a chance to meet. We did have some emergency action with Leo, so that's been taken up members' time.
Thank you, Perry. I'll try and go meeting between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Previous business. Would anyone like to volunteer to take over the chair or vice-chair positions? That's still open. Ryan, are you saying you would like to volunteer? I'm not sure. Which are you volunteering for?
Yeah, whoever needs to do it.
Okay.
Whichever somebody isn't filling, or doesn't want to fill anymore, I guess, so.
That pretty much means you're president. You realize that, right?
I gotta get the experience somewhere.
This is Erin. I wouldn't mind being the vice-chair, but I'm a really bad note-taker, if someone wouldn't mind doing that.
Since we record the meetings, Erin, I'd be glad to do the minutes, if that's an obstacle.
Yeah, that would be fine with me, if you wouldn't mind, Beth.
Sure.
So, we have a candidate for president, or for chair, Ryan McGinnis from LeGrand, and Erin from Milton-Freewater for vice-chair. Do I hear a motion to vote those people in, or as our new officers?
This is Dia. I will move that we accept Ryan as our chair, and Erin as our vice-chair.
And Ann says she seconds. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for stepping up.
Yeah, definitely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I will go ahead and finish chairing this meeting, and then we'll transfer responsibilities over at the next meeting, if that's all right with you.
That's fine.
All right. New Business, Policy Review and Member Guide. Beth?
Okay. This is just more of an informational piece, that some of our policies are a little old, and I think could stand some reviewing, and possibly updating. One of the policies that was mentioned to me was our policy for items that are lost, and, you know, depending on at what point they get lost, say they get lost in the Courier, whose responsibility is it to pay for the missing item? You know, do we try to submit a claim to the Courier? Do we just take responsibility? I guess just reviewing any policy that we have within the Sage system, and making sure that it's up to date, and what we want it to be, I think is a good thing to do. And also, I think a member guide, having all the policies in one place, plus an explanation of how things operate within Sage, I think will be a good asset to our members, and something we can place on the website to refer people to. So, I was going to start work on that.
That sounds good. I've always kind of wanted to see a report of items that were billed to other libraries. I don't know how that would be done.
I can try again at that. Some of it doesn't, isn't necessarily acted upon within the system, or it may not be apparent that it is, but I'll try to gather some statistics on that.
Perry, would you want a report about stuff that had been billed at other libraries, or just stuff that was lost and paid at other libraries?
Hmm, well, both would be helpful. Mostly lost and paid, so that we could have a proper accounting, make sure that we were getting that money back.
And I know from our staff's standpoint, I mean, we kind of have our own procedures, but- but it might be nice if we had standardized procedures about if you're paying for another library's item that's either lost or damaged, like kind of if everybody could have the same procedures on that, I think it would be helpful. I mean, assuming most of us highly, highly, highly encourage the patron to write a check to the other library, but.
Yeah, for some of the libraries that are departments of the city or county, it's, it's a big pain to have a check reissued and sent.
Well, I mean, well, you know, too, I mean, it's a big pain for us as a district, too. It takes a lot of time.
Yeah. Yep.
The opposing point, though, is when we have somebody that's willing to pay, we're willing to take it, even if it's cash.
True.
Right, of course. It's just the process takes so much longer if they pay with cash.
Yeah, and I believe that's written up in our policies is the recommendation is if at all possible to be able to get a check written to the owning library and the patrons' library staff being, you know, willing to mail that payment to the owning library.
I think that case right there, Beth, is one of the keys that needs to be part of if we do standardize this because I've heard of libraries that, you know, I've had their patrons told they have to go back to a library because they won't take a check and send it.
I actually will say that as well.
Well, you know, one way around that, if we were, are able to get the online payment going is that we could, we could just enter it through the OPAC and have that collected centrally. And then Sage or the Baker Library District could issue that payment to the, to the owning library.
Well, that's the way that the online system works now, though, is if you're a Baker County patron and you go online and you pay your bills, is it automatic it goes to Baker County's account?
It would go to the Baker PayPal account unless there was one set at the top level.
Yeah, if we set one for Sage and we were thinking of doing this collectively and then dispersing, which might be the solution for everybody to be able to accept online payments more quickly.
You're adding, you're adding some work to that process, though. That's a monumental amount of work.
I think so, too, and that's why we were encouraging individual libraries to set up their own PayPal accounts and get this rolling, but.
I would say that the top level one would only really be useful in, in the case of a lost, damaged or item payment.
We've, we've been exploring the idea of being able to accept payments via things other than cash or check in LeGrand, though, and the city kind of has been fighting us on it because of the complexity of being able to do that. We'd have to have a new bank account created and a number of other things that are required by the city's auditors. And having the centralized one for us at least would be, would be better just because of the, the complexity that the auditors are making it for us here in LeGrand.
And I can, I can totally see that. It's just like systematically it just adds a tremendous amount of work on Sage's fiscal agent to have to cut all of these checks.
Yeah, and that is true, too. There probably is, I mean, with all of our members, quite a number of payments for lost items every month. So just that would be pretty large.
And it seems like the easiest is really to get the patron to write a check. So I guess one thing I was never really clear on is do we mail them through the postal service or do we mail them through the courier or does it not matter?
Well, I would say, given the question of lost items through the courier, I would probably want to just send it by the postal system.
Yeah, I think that was my assumption is that we would send any checks via the postal system. Something else we can, can consider if we want to move further on the idea of centralized accounts is, is, is maybe do, how do I phrase this? Kind of like a reconciliation twice a year. And that way we're not cutting as many checks.
That's true.
It's just an option.
Right. Yep, that would be handy.
It would be an option, although it's still like you have the potential of issuing 125 checks a year. That's probably like magnitudes of, that's probably like twice or three times the number of checks Sage writes in general, I'm guessing, right?
Yeah, for the most part, it's true.
I mean, I guess my worry is, I know you and, you and Brent are already stretched pretty thin and I would hate to spread you even thinner.
Well, at least we need to start with, I think, you know, seeing what data we can collect about the, the number of lost and billed items.
Yeah.
And see if that helps inform our, our potential.
And at least making sure people are on the same page with what the current procedures are.
Right.
That's true. Okay.
This is Brent. I'd be happy to work with someone that could maybe just kind of look or fact check with me what they might want out of that report so we could start trying to get it built, just kind of what fields you might want to show so we could try to at least get something working to get that displaying.
Yeah, I thought Brent, you and I could maybe come up with a draft report that we could send out and, and then have people critique.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, too.
Okay. Upcoming budget review and discussion. It is that time of year.
It is, and so I wanted to put it on this meeting's agenda just as a heads up to also ask for volunteers for the budget committee. And we tried to present a draft of next year's budget at the January meeting so that we can vote on it in March. And so I'm thinking we need to meet in December. This is one of those committees that really is just mainly active during the budget formation and then doesn't have to do anything the rest of the year. But, so if people want to volunteer today, that's fine. I will also send out an email asking for volunteers for the committee as well.
Am I still the chair of that, Beth?
Well, you know, truthfully, I looked back through emails and could not really determine who the chair was. I know Karen was and had to step down.
She took it over when Shannon left, I thought.
Okay.
Shannon chair of it for a while.
She was, and Karen took over for her, so maybe you took over for Karen. I, I was kind of leaving it open since it's such a short-lived committee. We just needed to work together as a team, I thought, to kind of come up with what we thought was a good stab at the budget for our January meeting, so.
Well, I am happy to be on the committee and or chair it.
Okay. Thank you, Buzzy.
Thanks, Buzzy. I think it's important that we have some continuity, especially in that particular committee.
Oh, definitely.
Otherwise, you know, people are floundering, not having any idea.
And I think I have a standing seat on that, so I'll, I'll participate.
As fiscal agent, I'm sorry. Perry was kind of probably giving.
That's all right. Yeah. Okay.
Maybe between Perry, Buzzy and I, we can establish maybe a time for a meeting, announce it and welcome participants.
I don't know if anybody saw, but Marcia Richmond volunteered on the chat, too.
Oh.
Oh.
And Dia said she's iffy. She'd like to help, but she's iffy about December dates.
Marcia, the president actually volunteered to do anything extra at this point.
Yeah, thanks, Marcia.
Yeah. That's awesome. Yeah.
I would like to sit on the committee and be able to tell people where the bones are buried.
Oh, history. Okay. All right. That's very, very, thank you.
Good idea. Thanks, Marie.
Thanks, everybody. Now let's move to proposed Sage-wide setting changes that Brent mentioned earlier. Let me go back to that slide.
Yes. So how long do you think is a good time at the Sage level for a hold to be alive without finding a target? So right now, I know, I know Anne mentioned earlier, she said hers wasn't working, but it's set at 180 days. That might be a little long for some libraries, but you can override this for your library, but I just want to make sure what the consensus is, how long a hold should live before it gets automatically canceled.
And I do want to interject at this point. Brent and I are working on some, some holds reports that'll kind of inform libraries on things that have been waiting for copy too long or say no copy. So we're going to be trying to give reports that will help libraries be more proactive for their patrons. But we still need this limit in there.
May I ask a question regarding this?
Yes.
Is this, is this interval that we're talking about setting there, is this in place of those that don't set it, that a patron doesn't set it themselves?
Yes, that is.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
So this is Buzzy. Given that many of the libraries age protect their items for up to six months, it seems like it should be longer than the six months that it is right now because that way if another library's patron has a hold on that item and that's the only owning library, then the hold is, could potentially expire like really shortly after the age protection is up.
And I have a question about that because that's one of those policies probably needs to be reviewed sooner than later because I believe our policy says three months is what the top is, and yet we've been changing and adding.
Well, we also have a few libraries that do 18 months, which.
Exactly.
Sorry if any of you are those libraries, but that seems completely unreasonable to me if you're part of a library consortium.
I think in some respects, this kind of has to go in conjunction with that other.
Well, if the, the Sage system-wide policy is supposed to be three months, why do we even have options for any larger lengths of time available in every case?
I think there's some history. With the six month, I think it was implemented because at that time we did not have the capability to set the age protected, age protection based upon active date.
Okay.
Rather than create date and some libraries, their books were in processing a long time.
Yeah, we're one of those libraries sometimes ourselves.
Yeah, so six month was instituted for that reason, but now we have our age protection based upon active date. And so it could be that we could back down from having that as an option if that's what we decided consortium-wide.
Yeah. See, that makes sense to me. So if we can only limit to 90 days, let's say, for the hold protection, then, then I would want to see something like five-month hold expiration because that way you get three months for the whole protection and then two months for the hold to be filled. And I don't think I've ever seen a hold that went longer than two months that actually ended up getting filled before it expired at the longer time anyway. If that all makes sense.
So just to clarify, would this be, three months would be a maximum and then, but you could have lower than that? I mean, honestly, if I were king of the world, I would get rid of age protection completely, but I know that several of you do not like that idea. But I want to make sure that those of us who choose not to age protect our items can continue choosing not to age protect them.
Oh, certainly. I, I think it's, the age protection has always been optional and I would hope it would continue to be that way.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why, I don't see why you would force it.
I have a, I have a report of libraries that have over the three-month age protection limit, and I was thinking about emailing those libraries because I think maybe some of them might just not know, you know, unless you went by all your items, that you have some that are set at that, that high of.
I think it would be good, Brent, to communicate with those libraries and see what their reasons are for having the higher settings. And it gives us an opportunity to let them know about the active date as well if, if they haven't heard about it. So should we?
So I'm wondering if we could kind of do some investigating before we actually propose something and or pass something?
We can certainly do that. It was just mainly just getting the discussion started. We don't have to make a decision today if, if not everybody's comfortable with that.
My concern would be that a hold gets placed on an item that's in processing for longer than 100 days and then that hold disappears because nobody else has ever added an item or, or that, that item just hasn't, that title hasn't been made available. And then the patron has no option.
Yeah, but, but they were saying that the hold expiration would apply, the three-month protection would apply once the item went out of processing status, right?
Well, yeah, but this is hold expire interval, which I think is a different setting.
Brent, do you know what our current setting is for in-process? Are those items placed on pull list? Is it considered holdable? We talked about it and I just.
In-process is considered hold.
Yeah. So it would get put on somebody's hold shelf or a pull list so that they could process it more quickly, given the fact that there's a hold.
I don't know that that is coming up on our pull lists.
That in-process items do not come up on our pull list.
It would be really.
I think this was a recent change that might have been made or not. That's why I was asking, Brent.
Well, I haven't made any changes to the status, but I remember the in-process was meant to be holdable so that, I know that's the Evergreen default, so that if a library has maybe a record in. has maybe a record in, and they're scanning it, it's just so that hold can build up on the item before it can stand in on the shelf. And if you have those appear on our pull list, I mean, those could be records that we pre-downloaded for items that haven't even hit their street date yet. So, I mean, it would just be confusing, at least for our circulation staff, for things that are in-process to appear on that list. I mean, maybe it would be useful to have a report that listed in-process things that had, that had holds on them, but I wouldn't merge the two together. Yeah, I'd have to double-check on this, but I'm pretty sure when you place the hold, it won't be going onto the list to be captured while it's in-process, but the hold will still build, it just will not be targeted to that library for capture. But I'd have to look at that.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at the status, the copy status setting right now, and in-process, that status is considered holdable.
Yeah, holds could be placed, but that doesn't mean that they show up on the pull list, and like, yeah, Buzzy says that could be problematic.
Which is what? Yeah, it could be.
I'm thinking of taking all of our items that are just waiting for processing, that are cataloged, they're ready to go, and putting them on a separate shelf location, and making them available status, so that they will show up on our pull lists.
Okay.
Beth, I just checked with the in-process, while it's holdable, an item in that status is not set to active. So, it's only when that item is checked in that it becomes active, and thus, it would be targeted for a hold.
Got it, okay, so it's a combination, all right.
Is there another status that would make it active, that would basically perform the same function?
As soon as you scan the in-process item, it would change to re-shelving, which does set the item active. So, I think the idea is when you're having those items in-process, as soon as you scan it that second time, it means you're ready to put it on the shelf. I'd be willing to hear if there's a better way.
I don't know, this might be something we could address with a holds report, to kind of let libraries know of those things that patrons want, but they're in-process.
Yeah, so we need to prioritize in our processing queue.
So, we can work on that in the holds report.
I have another logistical question that was raised in my mind by a comment earlier. If we set this, and it automatically expires, will a patron be notified that their hold has been expiring, or will it just drop out, and they won't know? They'll still be thinking they're waiting on a hold?
Yes, Dia, there is a trigger for an email alert to send to the patron to say, "Sorry, your hold has, you know, basically lived too long, it's been expired from this library." They would get an email notice about that as soon as the hold was expired.
Brent, if they don't have an email address, we aren't currently notifying the library, though, with a notice, are we?
No, it would just go to the patron. We could set it up to email the library, but that might be, I don't know if the library would want to do all those.
I expect that would be ignored.
And I think reasonably, it's the responsibility of the patron, if they want to continue to have it on hold, once the hold is expired after months and months, to let us know that they'd like to continue to have it on hold, because a lot of the time, people will find the book another way, or borrow it from a friend or something, and if the hold gets canceled, they won't care. But if they're notified, then they'll at least have the option of putting it on hold again. But if we get a notice, and we automatically put it back on hold, maybe we're putting a hold on a book for a person who went out and got a copy from their friend, or from the local used bookstore for a dollar, and.
Yeah, very true, Ryan.
Then we're wasting time sending that book to LeGrand from Hood River, when we don't even need it anymore, which happens here, which happens here several times a month, so.
I'm wondering if it's possible that maybe the smaller libraries may be the ones that would have a preference to do, just as you're speaking about, Brent, over the larger libraries?
Yeah, and that would be possible to send it to a central, instead of the patron getting the notice, the library could, but that would, yeah, that's possible.
Could it be set up so that, you know, say, library A and B doesn't want that sent, but C and F do? Is it possible to, you know, have a few set up and not everybody?
Dia, are you talking about those patrons who don't have an email address?
Correct. Because I can see where, you know, the larger libraries would find that probably more problematic, and/or more bother, in a lot of respects, than, say, a smaller library, you know, where a patron comes in on a regular basis, or just, you know, there's, and I don't want to say I'm more personal, but just because of the fact it's a smaller community, that usually is the case.
Would it be possible to set up something like we do for the overdue notices? And it would be something that people could optionally retrieve if they wanted to? And would that be easier than setting up the email notices for X library, but not for Y library?
Well, I think it's important that the patrons get that notice, if they have an email. It's whether they don't have an email.
Well, no, I know, I'm talking about for the library purposes, not for the patron side stuff.
It could be possible for, are you talking about the printable overdoses?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I'm not, again, sure without looking at it right now, but that was, I think that was kind of been depreciated a bit, so we'd have to look at the code and see exactly what it's doing, if we can modify it to look at canceled hold.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
I'm just curious if that would be easier for you guys, or if setting up the email thing would be easier for you guys.
I'm thinking a report would be even easier, because we can query canceled holds, and find out whether the patron has an email, and if not, add it to a report.
Okay, so just creating a report template?
Based on how.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, rather than digging into code and creating notices, I think if we just have, it could even be a centralized report, or we could do individual for particular libraries, but I think if we handle it through the report module, it'll be a lot easier.
And if you make a template, people who want it can get it, and people who don't don't have to.
Oh, that's true, too.
Yeah, because like Anne is saying, that they don't need a list of canceled holds, you know, and I don't think we'd really worry about it too much either. But for the libraries that have a lot of patrons who don't have email, I could see how that would be useful, so.
So, it sounds like Brent's mentioning that if this report is run, it will not only show items that were, the holds were canceled because they timed out, but also ones that were canceled because their shelf expire time was hit, which seems like it'd be a much larger number than the number of holds that just flat-out expire because they never get filled.
Yeah.
There might be a lot of white noise.
Yeah, but I think we could narrow it down, you know, based upon the reason, and some other factors, I think we could screen out the white noise.
So, would this report be done instead of emailing patrons automatically who have email addresses?
No, this would just be for those patrons that did not have an email, and so, there was no way to get them a notification.
And this would be in place of emailing the libraries, right?
Yes.
And which library would actually get that notice? The library who owned the item, and wasn't being fulfilled, or the library whose patron it was?
My assumption was it's the patron's home library, because they're the ones that are invested in serving and meeting their patrons' needs.
Okay. Well, I think, back to the expire interval, I think that there's really a couple of different scenarios. There's one where we have several copies, many libraries have copies of an item, and the hold queue is just large, and it may not be filled before the expire interval passes. So, it needs to be long enough to not interfere with that, because then the patron would have to get in the back of the line again. And then, the other scenario is when there's just one copy or so, or two copies, and, you know, they're both lost or missing, and maybe there's another bib record that that hold could be placed on, that actually has copies on another format or something.
Yeah, Perry, for the question that kind of aroused this change, Dan, for the in-service date, had placed the hold on a bib that only had one item, and that item had gone lost, and it didn't look like that bib was going to get any more items on it anytime soon, so the hold was kind of just churning around. And I have a report kind of from, that I've shared with Beth, but I'd like to share a little wider, that's called Hopeless Holds, and it's holds that are placed on bibs that have zero holdable items. And that could be something that's maybe even sent out on the list serve monthly, or something like that, just to check. Yeah, it was mainly to kind of that situation, where there's only one item on a bib that's gone missing, or lost, or otherwise unholdable. Does the patron, you know, how would the patron know if it was, if there was no expire interval? So, the system may not have this capability, but in your first scenario, Perry, where you said, you know, the hold list is just so long, they don't get it in six months, is there a way for the system to send them an email before their hold, like, two weeks before their hold expires, that says, "Hey, you might want to renew this hold," because otherwise, they'll lose their queue position? And maybe it can't, but we're asking.
I think there, I think there is such a notice that somebody in the Evergreen system was working on. I seem to remember some discussion about that on the list serve. So, I think technically, it is possible.
Yeah, I think there is a pre-expire kind of notice.
Yeah.
And then, they have the option to renew it, basically restart that interval time? Or is it just for informational purposes?
Yeah. Yeah, and they can renew it online themselves, yeah. Or they can, yeah, cancel the hold on another item.
So, it's possible for them, then, to renew it themselves, if they wouldn't have to go through a library to do that?
Yeah, they would have to, yeah, they can cancel and reset the hold from their My account.
Right, but if they're in a queue.
They don't want to cancel.
Would they have to go to their library in order to renew the level, the interval?
For that, okay.
Because I think that's kind of part of the heart of what was just asked.
Brent, they could change their hold expire window, right? And would their setting counteract any system-wide setting?
I'll log in real quick and have a look.
I don't know that we do have any holds queues that are so large, it's taking some people six months to get an item, maybe, but my concern would be that we're placing a little too much responsibility on the patron for that, and, you know, if they missed that email or something, and they had been waiting for that hold to be filled for months and months, and then it expired, they'd be pretty irate.
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, should we hold off on making any Sage-wide settings on hold expire interval, do some more research, and then come back to the next meeting with, because it looks like we have some report options, it may not be as much of an issue.
Okay.
That sounds good, so table this.
You can place the hold, you can set a cancel date if you're a patron for the hold, so they can set it also if they'd like, but.
So, if they don't set that, there is no expire interval, is that correct?
Yeah, unless the library set it on their own setting.
Right.
Well, can we actually get some consensus to have it set by default to something, maybe a year, and then we could shorten it if, you know, with more information, but I think there needs to be something.
I think that'd be good. My last system is.
Well, I think the longest hold, go ahead.
My last system used a year, and it seemed to work all right.
Well, what's the longest hold anybody, or hold block that anybody's using right now?
You mean?
Was it the 180 days for whoever the phone number is?
I mean, the highest age protection is 18 months.
Okay, oh, wow.
But it sounds like there might be some consensus to get rid of that. Yeah, there's only like three or four on certain libraries.
Okay. Yeah, might as well go for a year then, unless anybody wants something lower than that for now.
And is there a problem with it being a year? I can't think of any problems it would generate.
This is Dia. I would move that we set the hold expire interval for a year at the current point in time, and then we come back with a bit more information, so we can make adjustments as need be.
Okay, there's been a motion to set it for a year, is there a second?
Ended by a chat.
Oh, ended by a chat, okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Any objections to that passing? Okay, hearing none, that motion will stand. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next setting proposal. Disable patron credit.
Yeah, I was just curious if there are any libraries in the council meeting right now that have used patron credit to have, for using for paying fines or overdoses, or if it's just caused issues with them, because that's primarily what I see when I get tickets or emails, it's about, I seldom see patron credit being used to help a library. So I was just wondering if anyone hasn't been using the pay by patron credit option in the bills tab of a.
This is Erin. We don't use it, but it causes nothing but problems for us to have the patron credit. It's been a frequent problem for us.
Yeah, and this will, checking this, will hide the option to even pay by credit.
Is there a way to disable it, but still allow us to manually add a credit if we need to pay a patron back for something? Like if they returned a item they paid for within the window where we'll reimburse them? Or does it completely eliminate the possibility for it at all? Because that's the only real use we find for it is just as a, like Erin, we have many, many, many issues with it, but we do sometimes use and we'll just say, oh, this patron returned this and it was within this month window, so we'll reimburse them the cost of the item.
We just put a note on their account that says, you know, we owe them 20 bucks with the date and our name. And that seems to work easier than the credit part.
Makes sense.
This credit option is different than the refund option, correct?
Yes.
And it's not negative balance.
Well, this is the pay by. So like if a patron has $10 in fines, you could pay by patron credit. And there's a host of other things, like if you get, if you overpay, you can turn the change into patron credit, which I've never seen cause anything but problems.
Yeah.
I guess, isn't there a way to get rid of the refund one? Because the refund one causes all kinds of issues.
Yeah, and in the 2.9 release of Evergreen, there is support for what they call conditional negative balances, which does alleviate a lot of that problem.
We've never really been trained or learned ourselves on how to use the credit or the refund capabilities. So we don't, we just don't use them. And to adjust balances, you know, we add billings to make their accounts zero balances necessary. So I would be fine for turning off patron credit.
If I'm remembering correctly, at the district in service a couple of weeks ago when this was presented, everyone kind of went, yay!
Yeah, that was the reaction.
Is there also a way to get rid of the negative balances currently in the system?
As it stands right now, you would have to find, like a patron has negative $10, you'd have to find that bill that, you know, maybe they paid $10 and then they returned the item and that gave them an extra credit. You'd have to find that bill and zero it out, kind of like Perry was saying. But that is, there is better, much better support for that in the 2.9 release of Evergreen. But yeah, it still is kind of a tricky area. And there is a feature in the staff client in the admin menu. There is a selection called patrons with negative balances. And that'll show you a list of all the patrons at your library that currently have a balance below zero.
Yeah, and some patrons, you know, they'll pay for a lost book, then they'll find it and return it. And then they opt to keep that negative balance to offset future fines rather than opting for a refund check to be issued. And in that case, we just, you know, make a note that they opted for that. And we don't go back and keep asking them, do you want a check to be sent?
Yeah, I guess our issue has been because of some weird settings, like we would get, like a patron, there was an item in lost status, not lost and paid, but lost, and the patron would return it and would start crediting them back. Even though they hadn't actually paid for it. Maybe it's just us who was having that problem.
No, we've had that occasionally in Legrand as well, when they get the lost status and it automatically bills. And then the item comes back, it messes everything up.
I don't understand how that happens. How do they get credited if there's never been a payment made?
It depends on the window. There's this library setting that after, and it, after so many months, it will not deduct that from, oh, how do I phrase this? I'm getting confused. Basically, it's a setting that the library can choose as to a window of opportunity for the patron to get that lost charge refunded on their record. And so if that window has passed, that will also affect charges.
Right. I mean, I think that my understanding of it was it was, so I guess because Evergreen hasn't had the lost and paid status for very long, it seems like what the system was doing was just assuming every lost book had been paid for.
That's true, yes.
Like, I mean, we have a policy that says that if you pay for a book, but you lost a book and you paid for it, if you find it within six months of paying for it, we'll refund back the cost of the book and keep the processing fee. Which I'm assuming is what that setting was trying to get at. It's just because the lost and paid status still isn't really like a very well hashed out status. The system doesn't behave that way.
I have, I just haven't seen that happen in our case, I guess, where it's lost and assumes a payment even though none has been made.
Well, Brent changed a setting on ours and it stopped doing it forcibly. We still have a whole bunch of old ones that.
Well, back to the proposal. Disabling patron credit. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Ann already did in the chat a couple of minutes ago.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and second that.
The motion is to turn off credit, but to allow libraries the option of applying credit if we see fit. And by credit, I think that means applying a negative balance rather than payment by patron credit.
Yeah, the credit's almost like another payment method, kind of like credit card or check.
Right.
Yeah.
Kind of like work, make our patrons work it off.
Right. Well, yeah. Okay, Ann says yes, that is her intention. So motioned and seconded? Any more discussion? Okay. Anybody object to that being approved? Hearing none, that motion passes. Okay. Let's get back to the agenda. Research increasing number of renewals.
Yeah, so we just find that we end up having a lot of patrons who hit the two renewal limit and they would like to renew for legitimate reasons. And you know, since looking around at other consortia, it seems like our renewal number is pretty low. I was just wondering if maybe we, maybe there could be some research done into possibly increasing it to something like three or four.
I wouldn't mind doing that. I frequently have people who, you know, they're doing like the diet books or cookbooks or something like that and want to have it for a little longer.
And on a related matter, there is a function of having renewals apply automatically, is there not?
I believe so, actually.
There is a new feature. I have some concerns.
There was a big debate about that on the OpenILS listserv about whether it's a wise policy or not. It was interesting, like it kind of came down along interesting lines because like the developers all thought it was a great idea and a lot of like the directors and stuff were pretty skeptical of it. I think that the negative side was arguing that it removes a lot of responsibility for the patron, they don't really have to pay attention to where the item is. They know it's just going to auto-renew.
So it could lead to increased losses? Which would then, you know, I mean, if the idea is to keep renewing automatically so the patron avoids incremental fines, then if you lose the item, that defeats the purpose.
And I'm curious about whether.
I think we lost your audio, Ryan. Could you repeat that? Okay. I don't hear anything from, Ryan, let me go to the chat here, there's some discussion. Report of patrons that have negative balances so they could be zeroed out. Okay, that's a side discussion.
Yeah, Debbie's concern, this is Beth, was one that I had with patrons who were, you know, possibly waiting for things to come back. It would delay their being able to check out the material.
That would be presumably if they don't have a hold on it.
Correct, yeah. I think the automatic renewal would be blocked by a hold. So I guess it would just depend on, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, this is Erin. I think it would be confusing because I think we have a lot of patrons that don't use email or they don't check their email. And they might just assume everything's going to be renewed automatically and they might not know that book is actually like a high-demand book or there's a hold on it unless they actually called or went on their account themselves. That would be my concern. I think we have a lot of frustrated people.
You bring up a good point, Erin. It's true.
So what kind of research needs to be done on increasing number of renewals? Survey of kind of the standard or?
I mean, we could look at other consortia. And then I guess I was thinking, maybe not research, but is the general Sage membership in favor of doing that?
Okay. Surveying our own membership.
Like change it as a library, but I mean, I always like to have unified policies as much as possible.
Between this and the next meeting, we could certainly survey the Sage libraries and find out their feelings, concerns, if there are any.
Gauge the support for increasing it three or four times? How high do we want to go?
My thought was four, four renewals, but total, not additional. I've actually worked in a system where they had unlimited renewals.
Wow.
That was interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that the lost or damaged items, just continue renewing them so they wouldn't have to pay for them.
Right.
Yeah, that's a little too radical.
Okay. So Brent or Beth will survey the membership before the next meeting.
Yeah.
Moving on to OPAC visibility for lost, missing items.
Yeah, so that, this is just kind of, we were talking about like the in-process status. And there are a bunch of flags with these types of statuses that items have. And so as it stands right now, if you do a search for maybe, I don't know, something like Game of Thrones on the, as a patron on the catalog, it'll also display the items at libraries that are lost or missing. Which I thought as a patron might not be that helpful because these are neither holdable nor, you know, they don't, I don't see how that really helps the patron knowing that that library has a lost or missing copy. And so right now that's visible to both the patron and the staff member. But flipping that OPAC visibility flag for those statuses will mean that patrons would not see lost or missing items in OPAC searches. But staff members or people using the Evergreen staff client would still see those items. They would just be hidden from the patron's view.
Is there a way to set it so that, say, if it's only been in lost status for like a month, it would still show up? But if it's been for longer than that?
Right now, it's not that granular. It's kind of more of show it or don't show it.
Just because I think that many of us probably have patrons where like the item goes in a lost and we send them the bill and like, oh, damn, I need to turn that in. And then it gets turned in.
Yeah, I was just trying to think of a way to kind of clean up the results.
In general, it would help though, I think.
Yeah, I think we discussed this a while back and it was actually a proposal of mine. There wasn't support for it at the time, but I'm still in favor of it. I think the only problem that we'd have is when we have people, maybe volunteers or something, that are reviewing donations, donated copies. And they're not using the staff client for that, they'll be using the OPAC. So, but our items don't have a very short, automatic, lost period.
Perry, if they had logged in as a account, Evergreen account that had a staff privilege, they would still see items, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. Well, I mean, even if they, even if they didn't see it and they decided to add that donation, that would be fine. Because the item is not showing up because it's lost. And if the other item comes back, then we have two, it's not, not a big deal. Anybody else have ideas about that?
Yeah, this would be sending it back to the, I'm not sure when it was changed, or maybe for a reason, but the defaults are to leave it not visible to patrons.
But Sage-wide, it is set to be visible?
It is, and that was probably a setting that we decided on early in our Evergreen installation. And it could be because of just the migration, wanting to have. And it could be because of just the migration, wanting to have more information about the status of items visible. I don't have an objection to changing it, just wondered if that was another thing that we needed to query the whole consortium about, or whether as a council, we felt comfortable just making that decision on behalf of Sage.
I would think if we're going to send out a survey, that's, you know, an easy question Would lost item not be listed at all to patron?
I think, too...
Debbie, the answer to that is correct. That would not show up to the patron if the item was lost.
And if we added this on a survey, could you add a, like, an open variable text, whatever kind of a input for people to actually give their reasons if they really had a strong opinion, so that we had, you know, some additional information?
Yeah, I think we could do that for both questions, actually, just to give them more opportunity to share their voice.
I think that would be helpful.
I guess, one thing with the surveys, too, is are we going to limit it to one response per library? So the big libraries don't have an unfair advantage?
I think that would be helpful. We have a better, we have a better feeling for, you know, how many libraries participated and/or, you know, overall, percentage-wise, when we look at it that way.
Right.
Regarding donations, I mean, I don't know how other people's catalogers catalog, but we try to use Evergreen to look for whether we have donations, but our cataloger generally, I mean, she'll look up the ISBN, but she also looks up the title to see if the titles are in the system. So, I mean, depending on your cataloging workflow process, the fact that you already have it may come up in the cataloging process. And it makes more work for the cataloger, which is not great, but...
Okay, Brent and I will put that question on the survey as well, and we can report back at the next council meeting.
Okay, very good. That concludes our new business agenda items for next meeting, so there will be that, there will be maybe a policy review, a member guide, reports from the governance and budget committees.
So I feel like if we're doing a policy review, it'd be really, really useful to have the circulation committee be active again.
Agreed, yeah. That's a big component, so that'll be on the task list, too, to revitalize that committee and have a meeting. Don't know whether it'll happen this month, but certainly in December.
Are there any volunteers to chair that committee?
This is Brent. I volunteer to chair that committee.
Review of task assignments, did, John, did you keep a list of the tasks?
Yes, I did.
Oh, great.
Do you want me to go through them?
Sure.
Beth will look at purchasing audiobooks and CD cases. Jeff from EOU will work on updating courier documents. Beth will start work on the Sage policy review and member guide. Beth, Buzzy, and Perry will look at the December dates of the budget committee. Brent or Beth will survey the membership about increased renewals and lost items being visible on the OPAC.
Excellent. Okay, well, that concludes our meeting. I want to thank John for his service as vice chair, and the incoming officers for stepping up for those positions. If there's nothing else, we'll conclude the meeting and see you in January.
Thank you, Perry, for being a chair. You've been awesome.
Thank you, Perry.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Perry.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.